Some of the changes we have that I think some of the changes you see in here, we probably need to categorize them a little bit different on some of the things that we purchased, like improvements for the airport. There's some things in here that were probably put in any different categories that showed that we were over budget on some. So I think that some of that we've got to figure out how to do and Jason himself has been doing it for everything that we've got on the financials. So it's been working pretty well.
Mister, do you have a question at all before we shift? Because I think we're almost I was asking Mr. Williams.
I've got something.
Yes, sir.
I've got something. Let's go back to page seventy-one. Let's talk about the revenue. This may be a thing Lauren made incorrect, or maybe it's a typo. Forty-three, two-fifteen, FAA federal grant, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Right under is forty-three, five hundred, says transfer from city general fund, sixty thousand.
Right. That was the, that's the FAA grant that we get every year that we end up, we end up tabling it for three years on this one. That was for the airport taxiway lighting coming up project. So it's a ninety-ten. That means ninety percent of it is given from the federal aviation and then ten percent of it is going to be paid by the state. So, but we have to provide, we have to pay a percentage of it down with our own money. But then after we get paid, we pay it down, then we can draw it back out of the Delphi account, which is a account that the FAA sets up that deposits the money in it and Lauren and Brandon, I think they're taking care of that and working that. So that's what that sixty thousand we just got from you.
Okay.
If you're asking.
Yeah, well, I was wondering, I didn't see that where the general fund was spending that money to send to the thing. So it may have, I may have missed it.
I don't think they gave this to me after I did.
Okay, so there's a, another hiccup. One matching for me, that was why I was wondering.
The five eighty-five, we pay a hundred percent of it and we get reimbursed. So we just, that's a net zero for our account, but we have to have the budget.
You've got six hundred and fifty in the capital expenditure on the next page over. And that just about matches that up.
Right. When we pay it all and then they, we get reimbursed within two weeks, you know, every time we make a payment, she can go in and as long as everything's set.
What is that project for six hundred and fifty grand?
That's the taxiway lights, taxiway lights improvements to some old porch lights, LED lights, plus the runway identification lights, the happy lights, which is approach lights coming in, and the beacon. So this was saved for three years. So every, was it six, four years? Okay. So it's four years that we save the money up and we get a hundred and fifty thousand a year on the somewhere in the range.
Should we have to spend any?
We didn't spend any for the last four years. So this money's been banked. So if that's answered your question.
Yeah. How's the food truck leasing? How's that going?
It's slow. I think COVID died down and food trucks became less popular. And also, I've seen a lot of food trucks come and go. And I've noticed that there's very few people in the food truck industry that actually make it. They come in, they think they're going to do really well. They set up, they spend all this money to set up a truck. And then they, they're there for a few months and then they go back to their job. So there's a, I know one really reputable truck that did very well. They were going to be set up quite a bit. And then that owner got a job for Locky. So now he's not running a food truck, but maybe once or twice a month.
Yep.
We had another food truck that was there twenty-four-seven out of El Dorado. He left and went back to El Dorado for unknown reasons. We had another food truck set up there seven days a week. And I think he just left. He had family problems or something back in Mexico. So he left to go back home. Another person is taking his position, but he's not there seven days a week. He's only there three days a week. So it's not, we're not making a killing off of it, but we are, it is, it is there. I think we've established our name. We do offer good services. And I know with the expansion that's supposed to be happening in industrial park over the next several years, there's going to be a lot of, a lot more travelers, a lot more outdoor people in. So I think it will do well.
When you do your markup on the gas, does that become a wash? The fuel and, I apologize. The aviation fuel that you're buying to sell, does it pretty much balance?
So the fuel, I think this year we're about on track to do a quarter of a million dollars in fuel sales, which is astronomical for us. I've never seen, I would have never imagined that kind of money. And now, a lot of that is because fuel prices went up. They spiked pretty hard in the summertime. So that's why earlier in the year, we asked you guys to amend our fuel budget so we could buy more fuel. We're going on two hundred and fifty thousand, I think we're going to make about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars in profit off of that. So we're having to be competitive with the local market. We're having to be competitive with El Dorado, Pine Bluff, Arkadelpin. And we're trying to, right now, we're not getting a lot of margin because we're trying to bring people in. We're trying to establish Camden's name as a place that people can come to. We have an attendant. We have a courtesy car. We have a fuel truck. We can take care of their needs. Please come buy our cheap fuel. So once we do that, we've got our, we have our reputation established and we can start creating more profit on the fuel.
All right. I do want to defer a little to, do you have anything that you'd like to ask? Are you clear so far? What about you?
That's the only question.
Sir?
Ellie, that's the only question. Oh, yeah, the six hundred and fifty.
Do you have anything that's?
We have that, Andy. Just you.
Okay.
All right. Do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have anything else that we'd like to ask them? At all? All right.
Thank you, John.
What else are we supposed to discuss tonight?
Public Works again?
The who?
Public Works again.
How quickly can we, are you ready to say something, sir? You said no?
Oh, there was a question about Travis and the, at the last budget meeting, the Streetscape.
If you don't mind, let's do, let's come on up. This is a part of you anyway. Thank you so much. Appreciate you tonight. We've got no more questions. We'll be past, we hope to pass the budget. We have to pass it by second one of next year. So you guys will come back to a couple more meetings just in case we sleep and get this. Thank you. All right. Call out the page for us, please.
If I can find that page.
All right. Mister.
I have to.
When you found the page we're on for Streetscape? Okay, what page are you on? All right. Talk, talk to us about what you have. What was our question?
It involved the budget for the, for the upcoming engineering part. It was significantly higher than last time. And I'm trying to find that page so I can not lie to you.
While you're working, while you're looking, we've got to wrap up our third phase on Towns Avenue. And we've approved for two hundred thousand dollars for fourth phase. It would be Jefferson.
Oh, sorry. So the Streetscape project for twenty twenty-three has a requested budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That is for the whole project. That would include engineering and our twenty percent match with that also.
Okay.
So I've got the breakdown here for the grant that we were awarded for next year's budget that you guys feel like you should know about.
Correct.
You may remember we applied for a second round of funding because the first round only got half the budget. So basically, we've got two hundred thousand dollars of grant money. And if we max out that.
Are we on page sixty-seven?
Yes.
All right. Page sixty-seven. Yes, continue, sir. I apologize.
So to max out that grant, the city would need to fork out about fifty thousand dollars. And that would come from the Streetscape improvement process. And then ask engineers, we're estimate engineering costs, and the engineering cost for that project is sixty thousand dollars. And so those are the two numbers that we would have to keep out of pocket. I believe first of the sixty thousand dollars for two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is really a lot of money. And it may not be worth it, but assuming to pay sixty thousand dollars for that two hundred thousand dollar project.
And that project is what part?
I've got a map here also.
Is that the Jefferson?
Yeah, this is Adams, the one we're completing right now. And it would go towards the river along Jefferson Street.
Okay.
Up to the brewer, towards the brewery. And the goal was to get that section and then also the hall of Madison also. But we only got half the funding that we were requesting.
Okay. So, so this, this does not include, because, yeah, originally we had discussed it with.
Madison and Jefferson.
Yes. But this will not cover.
Now, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to max out for the grant. And to stay as cool, if we don't want to do that section, they're pretty cool if we want to do some on Madison. They would let us do a little change around their location. But they probably wouldn't want us to go three or four blocks over. They kind of want to be considered.
Would it, okay. So we'd pay sixty thousand in engineering to do that one little section. And would it have to be done in the same style?
No, sir.
As the other stuff?
No, sir. I know if we're interested in maybe a different engineering project, which we can put out a request for qualifications from other engineers. We did that for this project when we got started several years ago. But the request for qualifications is not necessarily going to say who's the cheapest. It's just going to say the qualifications and projects that they've done. So that is something to consider. We have a reputation of a clone, but.
Well, maybe that.
Yes.
I couldn't help but notice, there's bump outs.
Yes, sir.
I was assured there would be no bump outs. And we have bump outs. Why is that?
You're not assured by Travis, because we have bump outs.
We discussed it. And we were said, no trees that are going to grow up and break the concrete, and no bump outs for trucks to get stuck on.
I did not assure you.
And we have bump outs.
We followed the city's master plan.
I'm thinking the discussion there that I, that I remember was that they were not going to be the giant bump outs that were put in on the first thing. They were going to be scaled back like the ones that went up Washington Street. And I, I think that's right. Yes. I think it's.
There are no trees. There are no trees in this, in this phase. And there are, we followed the city's master plan for downtown, which was approved. But at this phase, not including any trees. It did have bump outs, but as Mr. Spencey stated, after we completed the first phase, we realized that the bump outs, before we completed the first one, we realized the bump outs were way too big. And we could reduce size a half for everyone that.
Still kind of stick out, but.
They still stick out. They do stick out.
So are we on tap for finishing on time like these?
The current project?
Yeah.
The current project is, is a little bit behind schedule. We are waiting on AT&T to bury some cable lines up here at the red light. They started on Monday getting their project done. They said it should take a week minus the days that's scheduled.
So at the red light and left that near Jenny's?
Well, the contractor, it's not feasible for them to come and finish Jenny's until they can, they're going to come back and do everything at one time. They've got the same equipment. They've got a breakout, a breakout machine. They have to rent. And they want, they do all breakout at one time. And that's why you see that corner there that's broken out and they broke out for a long time. So they have their own work schedule and I couldn't agree more.
So basically, they're waiting on AT&T to do their thing.
And we've been waiting on them for a long time. It's taken a long time to get highway permits and it's been a fiasco. But they are out there being there and out there.
All right. Is there any other discussion tonight about the budget? In our, in the administration, I'll only be making one request. And so I think it would just be one for me, for my administrative assistant. And that'll be, and I'll, I'll bring that number, I've still had, I've done the research. But I just want to make sure that I balance that number fairly before going out. My administrator's been here for all three mayors and she knows, she's quite effective and efficient at getting done what we need done here. So I just want to be respectful of all the raises that other people are getting around her. She sees that every paper that I get comes by her desk first. And so I just want to, I want to make sure that we do something that's significant to her since we don't have what the retirement and all like, like some of the other jobs do. But I want to make, we've looked at some of the cities our size, but I just want to make sure that it's something that makes sense before I ask you for it. That's the only request I'll have for administration. Is there anything else to force tonight? Questions, challenges? We're ready for you, Arne. You, you want to go over something real quick? You want to do it real quick, too, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to hurry up. Yeah, you want, you want to hurry.
All right, Sid, kind of last, but I mean, I went over all the smaller items. I didn't have any capital outlays and anything. So I got all the capital outlays in here now.
Do we have that copy? Is that what we have?
You have to have one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, and the big one that you.
Just one or two things about our asking list. And again, we're just going to go over the capital outlays.
We were satisfied with everything except that we wanted him to add some of those in, right? That was the only challenge that we had was that we wanted you to ask us for some of this.
Yes, I gave you guys the list and asked you to plug them all in and it gives you a couple of prices.
You plugged all of them in?
No, not all of them.
So that, that, let me be clear before you get kicked off then, because I, I don't want to delay us. But I do want to say that some of our equipment has been thirty and forty years old. And as was mentioned before, we're expecting these people to do this work with less than sufficient equipment. And it keeps breaking down. It seems like with three machines, you can prepare. But because of the age of some of our machines, because some of them are diesel and they have to be outsourced. When something is down, now you're overworking what you do have. And as a result, we're finding ourselves in this bargain market quite a bit. So we're going to have to buckle down. And we've looked at that tax already. We've considered everything that we can. The only thing left to do is to ask for money to buy and purchase some of these machines so that we can stay working.
Yes, sir.
All right. Call the page number first.
Page forty-five. And I do want to say, we have, I talked to Mr. Carter outside a few minutes ago. We have came a long, long way with machinery, but we still have a long way to go. But we have seen significant progress. Page forty-five, I guess, line item five-nine-four-two-zero. That was not in the previous budget. And what that is, that's an AC service machine for me. The newer vehicles we get have a certain weight. You have to charge it, have to distance them. We've got one that's, I don't know, fifteen years old. It just, it doesn't work on the new stuff that we get now.
You said five-nine-four-one-zero?
Five-nine-four-two-zero, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes. I'm wrong.
Our show zero, but the detailed page on forty-seven shows your basic machine. But it's.
I'm, I'm one line up. I'm sorry. I'm one line up. You said it right.
Oh, sorry. It's five-nine-four-one-zero.
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-two thousand.
Yes, sir. And what that is, to fix air conditioners right now, we'd have to send them out. That right there is fixing in-house.
So on page forty-seven, it's explained as machinery and equipment, AC machine.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. All right. And you're saying that that's going to, and it's going to be used on all across for all the vehicles pretty much because it'll be an AC machine?
Yes. Everything we get on for next, maybe, you know, I think change next five, ten years, we'll be able to use that to do all the AC and R.
All right, sir. Are there any questions about that particular machine for twenty-two thousand for capital outlay under Public Works for Central Garage?
No, but I have something else for Central Garage.
Yes, sir.
The list you gave us at our previous meeting of all this equipment, you had a sheet that you gave us for streets, sanitation, parks, and central garage.
Yes, sir.
And you went back and you itemized or prioritized them, one, two, three, four, your top pick and your last pick.
Yes, sir.
This number two that you had here on Central Garage was for an air conditioner for the shop or an AC for the shop. Seventy thousand dollars on this list. I think you've left it off of, or I'm not seeing it here.
Yeah, and then make it on the list.
Okay. So you xed it. Or, I don't know if it's accidentally missing or intentionally left it out.
I don't know the answer to that straight up. But it is hot in that shop. It's an old shop. We do breathe in some different type of fumes. We've got some big fans now we use. On average, in the summertime, it's a hundred and fifteen degrees in the shop. The windows on the back side do not open. There's old ones, they don't open at all unless one of them gets busted out. So the doors open, we use fans. Now, you know, I'm fine if you guys want to add it on. You won't, you won't, you won't fight me.
Are you sure?
I'm a hundred percent sure. Are you sure, Colonel?
I'll give them a hug.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Well, it's, it's not on here, but we talked about training for our mechanics. We get new machinery, but our mechanics have no training to work on some of these things. It's not on here, but I think we talked about your budget line for training for our mechanics to go get some type of training.
Yes.
I do believe we started off with one thousand dollars. I do believe you suggested that.
I would have gone hard in that. Training's expensive.
It's, it's a lot. And we got new things. Some things that we had training, we can fix in-house. Whereas no training, send it to Texas, Canada, or El Dorado, we can save ourselves a ton of money if we had some type of training with our own guys. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. What, what about training all around? Like heavy equipment, you know, sending, I mean, you know, our fire department.
Everybody goes and gets trained.
Yeah. They go and get different training, stuff like that. And, and.
Your guys need it, too.
Yeah.
Previously, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I'm going to mix.
Previously, there was no training for any departments really on these. So that's why I'm adding, as we go, on the next couple pages, I'll be adding training for a HVAC guy to do some HVAC training. So we don't have to call gallons and dings every time something might happen. So I'm adding training that we do.
So if you'll, we also, executive order number forty, executive order number forty-seven, for those who may not know, the mayor gets to do some executive, we have some executive privilege. If a vote turns the other way, we could veto. I, I don't use those things, but they're available to us. And, and what had happened in the past, only police and fire were giving, were given incentives at seven. Executive order number forty-seven also will offer incentives for people who take training with you guys. And what I've asked is that we would consider diesel training to help us also. The challenge that we have is if we hire a person who's already got diesel training, we ain't in, even in the ballpark. The other problem is if we train one, it'll be easier for somebody else to steal it. But our vehicles, a lot of them are diesel. And so we do need to consider what it would cost, the timing, the way, the things that it would, so we need to consider again what that would take if our vehicles are one-way and we're only training gas.
Yeah. So is it possible, depending on what you said, Mayor, so if we train like you're saying, could it be feasible to, I don't know?
Why aren't we there?
Not, not stay. But the thing of it is, is you, you can't pay somebody fifteen dollars to do a thirty dollar an hour job. That's what I'm getting at.
That's what we do now. Not being funny, I'm being, I'm being honest.
Well, I'm, I'm serious. Because if, if you train these guys and, and they do a better job, it'd be more efficient for the city and it saves the city money. I don't think it's saving the city money to not pay them or compensate them for services rendered. That's what I'm getting at.
I, I one hundred percent understand. We just can't throw money out to everybody all the time. But we do have a guy, Frank Ham. If y'all don't know him, he fixes everything from the weed eater to a garbage truck to a knuckle bone to a dump truck to the track hole. And we do pay him sixteen dollars to do that. And, and we ask him to get him back in the trash truck when we have something goes on. If you don't, it's been times we picked up a trash can and there was a transmission inside the trash can, a full-blown transmission. Well, we don't know it because we don't look at it. We grab it and dump it. When that happens and we compress it, it hangs up in the trash truck. Well, somebody got to get in the truck. That's us. We give him a hazmat suit, a white hazmat suit, and he gets in and he works. That's his rankings.
So I think another way of asking the same question is, it is legal for us to hire, to have a person, to send him for training and to ask him to give us a year if we send him to school or two years or something like that in exchange for the education.
Yes, sir.
I think that that is a fair ask. And so we can do a little bit of bartering and that buys us time for another year's budget if they make such an agreement and don't do something really, really, really stupid to get fired so they can go to the next job.
That's it. We send them to get trained, correct?
Well, with diesel, with, with diesel, that's a whole different answer. So, and so that's going to be something else for us, yeah, to consider. All right. Go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, Art, we mentioned that we were, you were going to put a thousand dollars in there for training. I don't think it's in the copy I've got.
It's not in the copy.
Is, is that enough? Do you need two thousand?
It's not enough. But I kind of watched the last year or two. I just can't come ask for the whole world.
Well, that's just, I mean, for a fifteen thousand dollar, fifty million dollar budget, two thousand dollars is due. So I make a motion to put the two thousand dollars into a training budget.
It's about twenty-five, Ellie.
I mean, I don't know where you're.
So wait, twenty-five hundred or twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Two-five hundred, man.
Twenty-five hundred.
Two thousand, we started.
All right.
So where, where are we stopping? You want to stop at two thousand, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
And you haven't had a chance to look at any of this yet to know for certain about?
You're going to be disappointed what that buys.
I think, I think so. I think to get you, because we don't have that training locally. We would have to, he would have to travel somewhere to go take care of that. I don't want to ask him to take care of this.
Will you bring, if we, if we put twenty-five as a marker for training, will you put, will you go back and bring us an actual, factual on that?
I can do that. Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll need you to see you one more time in this train. All right? Keep going, sir.
All right. Let's go to page.
Fifty?
I'm working through that. Is that part the same there?
Yes.
Yes, the zero turn for fifteen, right?
Yes. And that's just normal, it's industrial size, zero turn. If you couldn't drive, I think that's it.
See, so there again, going back to your, your chart you had here, you've left off the second Ford Maverick. You, you wanted two Ford Mavericks and the mule. And those are not in there.
That is correct. And that is my fault. That wasn't in there. Can we do what now? Do we have to come back next week and redo it?
We have one Ford Maverick under the Public Works.
It's under the Public Works administration.
Yeah, twenty-three thousand. Normally, that's where those vehicles go, to the Public Works.
All right. And so you can interchange in exchange with another department as needed, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone have a question at all about that zero turn? All right?
Well, okay. So are we intending, because the, the thing on the parts that the sheet you gave us, that's an eighty thousand dollar deal. Fifteen for the mule, twenty-five for the Maverick, or that's for two Mavericks, sir?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five each.
And you also asked for two zero turns.
Yes, I did. And, and those were my initials for my guys. Maybe I'm too modest in not asking for the world. And so I guess I should ask for everything and let you guys tell me no to what you don't want me to have, correct?
Ask for a trash truck.
A trash truck is definitely perfect.
Well, like, it's, it's kind of easier if you put the stuff in. It's easier for to mark one off than keep writing things in, I think, for, for, that's where I've been trying to match up, was what's missing.
Always ask for the gold.
So in this figure one for parts, we noticed that, that you put in one zero turn and the mule that we were talking about is actually under another section, right?
No, no, it's the Maverick.
The mule is not on that.
Okay, the mule is not on, but the Maverick is on another section and it's one instead of two. All right. So you heard the request is to go on and ask and let them say no. All right?
We're, we're not putting food money in. I think the last time we talked about earmarking art money for the food. Is that accurate?
Well, I guess it's one of several things, I would think. But I, I think we need to know something about the food. What? Well, I, I guess it's one of several things, I would think, but I, I think we need to know something about the pool. What, what's it gonna cost to be, or what's gonna be done?
If I'm not mistaken, the last time we talked, uh, we talked about earmarkings and art money to re, to, to redo it. It needs a complete overhaul, not the pool area, just to, uh, to build itself.
We're talking about like the restrooms, changing rooms, that area.
In the building that holds, holds the equipment room we were talking about, put the shed or something.
Put the shed over, yes, sir.
I guess you catch up to it, boy.
We're doing the restrooms and the candies and lockers and everything.
Uh, we probably need to cut the old area over there and redo it. And I guess we can get us an architect somewhere to come in. I'm sure we can do some other in-house. But the big part of it needs to come, somebody to know a little bit more about the pool.
I got a question. The, um, the COVID money, that, um, yeah, but that would take care of, I mean, could we use some of that? Parts and wrecks? We're supposed to be doing something with the teen town and all of that. I mean, could, I'm just asking. You know, for us fixing these, like the pump house building, the dressing rooms and stuff like that. I know we earmarked it, so to speak, you know, to get it going, but yeah.
We swapped out the cover.
Right.
This, this is where we gotta get down to is we're gonna have.
Numbers.
You know, if you don't know what you think it's gonna, what we're gonna do, I mean, it just, uh, you know, we can pick a number, but if we're gonna get down to, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand for the street equipment and four hundred thousand dollars for the sanitation equipment, I mean,
Goes quick.
That, that are, that, that being dollars of ARPA money is only gonna go so far.
Yeah.
And we gotta pick out, well, okay, well, what are we gonna earmark it for?
Yeah. No, I just asked a question.
Yeah. I, you know, I'm, I'm all for saying I'd like to earmark, I, I'll say three hundred thousand of that ARPA money. Let's try to save it to use on the pool. We don't have to spend it for that, but we've got it. And, and not buy garbage trucks or some of the other. We, we can shuffle around on some other stuff.
Put that like a contingency, yeah.
Had a third where it can use it.
You gotta get priorities lined up.
Uh, I, I think that garbage truck, a dump truck may be an essential, so we.
Garbage truck, we gotta get.
Oh, yeah. All right, so, uh, we have any, are, are we on page sixty-nine yet?
I'm on page fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Is that the tech center? Right now, uh, if, if we're going back to seven sixty-nine progress, we'll have to leave somebody at the tech center, which will be that salary right there. We'll come from the tech center salary, um. Right now she comes out of our street department. She helped us there. But if we go all back and get in one building, somebody still has to stay at the incubator.
Can that person still do public works work? I mean, as far as opening up, turning all the lights, I mean, you, you, there's not a business going on there other than the people that are renting places.
The only thing that person will be responsible for right now is the front door. You have, I think, three businesses that come in from seven to four. I think one will be more graveyard. But that person will be, um, pretty much directing traffic to those three businesses. And Thursday and Friday, they help out with, uh, highway part of the driver's test. Right now, when the phone rings at public works at seven sixty-nine, it's transferred down to the incubator. If we go back, we won't transfer that line back down there. We'll keep it where we are. So I don't know if that person can answer phone calls or do anything if public works still in that building.
Looks like it's a, not a very demanding position. I guess I'll put it that way. You know.
Just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Company I work at, we use Ring Central. It, it's kind of like a V O I P phone system. And when somebody calls my office phone, it forwards. Same time my phone at the office rings, my cell phone rings. And could we do something like that? Uh, i- if we could get your person to sit down there, I, I could see giving them a bump in pay to keep us from hiring somebody new, especially if they're doing secretarial work for you up at the shop anyway. I, a computer's a computer. It doesn't care where it's located. You think something like that would be feasible or is that just way outside of your scope of what you're comfortable with?
If, if I was not at, at that incubator, I wouldn't have anything to do with it probably. Just being honest, I probably wouldn't even go down there because there would be no need for me to be there.
I'm not saying you.
Or, or my secretary. So I don't know if that's a thing that could happen. I don't know. Uh, I guess we.
Well, what we, the envisioning of it would include answering phone directing, uh, taking care of that particular building. But we also, right now, are having someone here that's handling the rentals for all of our parks buildings, but, uh, and we're also selling bags out of here. It could, it could become a place where, where we, we could, it's enough work to do around here. Uh, but I would, I would, would wanna sit down and just bring back a plan of job duties, responsibility, et cetera. But you've already got, this position has already been in street and we said we were gonna, uh, we want, we wanted to separate it and let street keep, keep the person to help us get streets done.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be adding.
And to bring in this money.
Or wouldn't be adding extra person because we're just already just moved that person from streets to here. So it will still be the same amount of money we've been paying already.
Okay.
Even better?
Yeah.
All right. Any more, uh, questions about, uh, page fifty-nine or about the tech center?
Uh, ju- just wanna say, uh, on that, we, at the last meeting, I think, discussed, uh, moving the, I believe it was community service coordinator position to that. That, that had been discussed at the last one. Because it was about the same, it was roughly the same salary. And right now, I don't believe we're doing a lot of community service stuff. So that, that was the discussion that was had. And then if, if at some point, if community service ramps back up again, I guess that's a bridge to cross when we get there, but, uh, but there, there was the discussion of moving that person, that, that job over to, to take, to take that position. Or at least that budget for that position.
All right.
Page sixty-seven. I live in tree division. Um, I think we had traveled training and I talked to you guys about James Vince. Um, right now, any little H back problem you call, we have to call somebody to come in while they're small. We spent a ton of money on the air conditioning unit at, uh, the business center this year. Finally getting it right. But if we had a guy that had at least some basic knowledge, we wouldn't have to call H back team every time we, something's going on. So, uh, we put a thousand bucks in training for that, uh.
Is that enough?
Is tech still teaching that?
Uh, I'm not sure.
What's the course?
H back.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they are. H back is out there at that, what's your jizz, at that special place.
I'm thinking tech would be willing to work with the same.
Yeah, and they work with, they are partners with us. So we'll be fine.
If we could make that happen quick.
Yes, we spent a lot of money.
So we can call tech and find out if they are, okay. And the other thing about tech is that if you actually found a course that you needed, they're willing to bring those courses here.
Oh, that'd be even better.
Yeah. So even with the diesel, I'd ask them what they consider. All right.
Page sixty-eight.
If you're going from fifty-nine, four-ten, we may as well go on to sixty-nine, huh?
Uh, yes.
All right, sixty-nine it is.
That is for a, uh, for an end loader and a two thousand twenty-three ton truck.
Okay, your, your previous list had, uh, you call it a wheeled loader?
That's the one.
Yeah, three hundred fifty, okay, and then a dump truck, and then it had two Ford Mavericks.
Uh-huh. I had a buggy truck and another caboka push-up.
Okay, and those, those items aren't on here.
That'd be correct. Again, I guess that's my.
You would likely add those on there.
I, I promise you, I will come back and every item you see will be on the list. With a few more added, and I'll let you guys take them off.
We just kinda need to see how, all this stuff adds up when you put it all, all on there and then you start chopping stuff off.
And what I did was I put the priorities on, that we, what we really have to have versus what we can.
Well, we're gonna put the top two on there.
Yes. All right. So I am in the collective department, the fourth trash truck is there. That's on page, uh, eighty-three. And that's the residential truck with two hundred and seventy-five. Uh, we go back a few pages on the colo. We have what you call a road truck and what happens with our trash here. We collect trash, we take it out to the landfill. We put it inside of an eighteen-wheeler and we take it to Smackover. And we use two trailers, two trucks right now going back and forth. A motor just blew, I think, uh, money. Variety, we had a motor blow, blow in one of our fat trucks. And it is a, again, what we call a road truck. We make two or three trips a day to Smackover. Uh, if you guys have ever been to Smackover landfill, it is, uh, it's a jungle. It's, it's, it's probably, I don't know, sixty, seventy feet area you can probably go to. And it is a lot of fight that goes on. Uh, because we have to go, whether it's rain, snow, and mud, we get stuck, they use a bulldozer and push us out to get us back home. So it is a animal to go back and forth. We have to weld on doors probably monthly if they push us out. So that motor blew, and I think it is a two thousand model, that's the motor blew on the private. So, um, I will be asking for a hundred and fifty thousand for that. And that's in the disposal department. Yes, I think.
Is that for a new truck or for an engine rebuild?
No, that's a new truck.
Okay.
That's a new truck. That's a two thousand twenty-three road truck. We didn't have anything in there. When will we come back?
I want to get finished with Thanksgiving. Next week is, um, oh, next week is, oh, tonight. Um, can we come back then on the eighth?
I can come back, man. Yeah, tell me to come back.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
That's a Thursday night. Wouldn't you, I know you have some other, it's Thursday.
No, I was just saying, so, so next week's the twenty-ninth.
Oh, is it? Okay, okay, okay.
This, this week is already, we already did Thanksgiving. Next week's not Thanksgiving.
Okay, okay. So what about?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday would be the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. I missed the whole week. All right. Uh, don't forget twenty-ninth, uh, yeah, twenty-ninth is next week. Don't forget A and P is that afternoon at three o'clock. All right? So the twenty-ninth, can you have those?
Yes.
Okay. So we can stop this tonight. Let's stop this because we're gonna say the same thing when we get to the next one. Let's put them in. Consider the impact, the financial impact. If you give us the impact, stay in the per department. And remember to highlight those numbers that are extraordinarily different. We can come back with that. All right?
Time, sir?
Say it again?
What time next week?
Oh, we've been doing six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty Tuesday. That's the halfway mark for us. Yes.
Let, let me say something that we have actually spent zero time on amongst ourselves. And I'm gonna say there's, from looking at the numbers, there hasn't been a lot of time spent on it here at headquarters. And that's the, the revenues, you know, we, we talk about expenses, but the other part of the equation is revenues. Uh, and like I said, I've tried to do just a little bit of looking to see, well, what, what's in line here? And I, I, I'm not, I don't know where the twenty-twenty-three estimated numbers, some of it came from, uh, for, uh, like I said, property taxes, ad hoc property taxes, and the public safety health taxes that are anticipated. Uh, I think our, our, actually our revenues for twenty-twenty-three is, I'm thinking underestimated. There may be a good reason for it, but I, I'd like to give an explanation of where some of these numbers, uh, did come from. You know, we're still counting, uh, apparently on the A and P commission giving us that hundred thousand dollars that they've been balking on. Uh, I, I wanna find out whether, uh, whether, I mean, if that's a legal thing, are we putting our budget in? Can we exit out and, and, yeah, I mean, at some point, it's kind of like dealing with energy. You gotta say, uh, you know, we've got an axe to, to swing to here. I don't know if they're playing ball or not, but, uh, like I said, we got in the budget. Are we gonna get it or not?
Well, what they have said, A and P was, uh, clearly said, they wanna know exactly what you're gonna do with the money before they give. They don't want, they're not just gonna give money. They need to know what your plan is. And so.
Well, anybody got a?
Get them a plan.
Who, who do they want to do, to do that?
Well, of course, the actual machines and the things that we need to keep some of this work going would be easy to, as an explanation for a hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, the same thing goes in the solid waste fund. I just kind of looked at that and, and comparing the, the revenue that came in to the solid waste for the, the, the garbage and stuff, for the first ten months of the year, that's all it had to go by. It looks like that there's gonna be, uh, this more money coming in to that fund than, than what is, uh, what we got budgeted. So I'm just kind of looking at that. I didn't know how much study anybody else had, had done of looking at the projected twenty-twenty-three revenue, but it's, be, if we wind up thinking we're actually gonna have more revenue, then we can be a little more generous with the equipment we buy.
So I, we, we are looking at revenue. We, our code enforcer has been diligent in trying to collect, uh, some, on some of the tax monies that we're supposed to have. Uh, we mentioned on last night that even with our, uh, first Friday, that out of seventy vendors, like three of them actually come back and pay taxes. We're trying to crack down on as much of that as we can. Out at the airport, when they come out there, we've gone from six hundred dollars for a transient truck to come a year to fifty dollars and two dollars per employee. But people aren't, uh, business, like several business licenses have not been purchased by businesses that are actually functioning in the city. So a lot of the income issues that we're having, uh, is a result of some of this, um, uh, some of our, I guess, trying to be too business, uh, very business friendly. Several of our restaurants make a list every month for not paying their taxes.
The, uh, those are, I'm gonna say, it's small in comparison to the sales tax revenues is where the, the property taxes and sales tax revenues, the split on the garbage taxes, that's where the, the big money comes into the general fund. It, you know, like I said, the other stuff is, fine stuff is good, but that's just not the, the big dollars.
Okay, so with our turnback or when people are, when people are char, are actually making those purchases on Amazon, some of that's gonna look pretty good, uh, this year as we begin to close, sir. All right, is there anything else before us tonight?
The, the only other thing I wanted to ask about, we discussed it once, was a, uh, the cola increase for, uh, from my understanding, those numbers currently are not reflected in the budget. Is that, is that correct?
Well, no. Well, I asked for one number and of course, Mr., uh, Alman Lindsay had her to go back and run three other different sets of numbers, uh, so.
But currently they're not. What we have in front of us, the col, the, the cost of living increase is currently not reflected in the numbers we're seeing.
That's true.
Right. And what, yeah, you are correct. And what I'm saying is, I, when I asked for.
Plug one of those in for next time? I didn't even know which one.
Well, let me, let me just say, I, you know, the mayor, I think, had, had, had put up a thing to say, calculate the one point three, okay, one point three percent. Yeah, but that's good. That had, that's about seventy-five thousand dollars that it would cost, uh, out of the city budget. I thought, well, what would one point five percent, uh, do? And that'd be about eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, if we went to, uh, one point seven five percent, that'd be ninety-nine thousand dollars, call it a hundred. So once we see what the budget looks like, I think any of those would be worth throwing in there. So, once we see what the budget looks like, I think any of those would be worth throwing in there, I I just didn't know how much, well, what kind of bonus we were gonna do and what else we'd do, but that's not uh a whole lot of money out of the thing, but somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred is what those three options would would generate.
And the the issue with, uh, that we were, the hurdle that we were looking at is once you commit to it, you're committed to that, and so we.
Yeah, you're stuck with it.
Yeah. But, like I said, with a twenty-five thousand dollar spread and a fifteen million dollar budget, it's, you know, not a big percentage.
Right.
Like I said, we just work it, once we see what the budget totals look like, we get off this equipment ball.
Alright, is there any other discussion? Uh, so again, she's been asked to bring all, now four different uh, uh, numbers in, so when she brings that, that'll tell us that, and then we also have all the numbers that he's asking for, and be prepared to uh negotiate on some of that. I'm gonna go, uh, and next Tuesday in the daytime, some of these machines that could be used at the parks, or we could certainly ask them for that and justify spending whatever can be used for parks, alright? So that'll knock a hundred thousand dollars off of this already uh growing list of part, uh, of needs. And and a lot of these things, the the machines, the front end those, some of those machines are simply non-negotiable, those, the dump truck stuff like that, but whatever we can get, get justified, we will. Is there any other business before us tonight? I do wanna mention that I was very happy for those who were able to turn out for Laskerville Street, first street that we've been able to do under that new law, but it was, it was beautiful, very well attended. Also, Alderman Moore and Alderman Askew were present at that particular unveiling of the sign. We've been updating signs, stop signs at schools and things like that most recently, but as you know, uh, uh, we we got, we got quite a ways to go, but we've been replacing those street signs and we've been making those signs ourselves, it's beautiful. Alright, anything else? Let's go home.
We don't need that for that.
Woo! Yes, sir! Thank you! Yes, sir! I'm doing that. Thank you!
Around here, you know, when we go to a trip like that, we gotta. Yeah, because that's up there here, you're an hour to the west, you're north Austin, up there.
It's on everything.
There's actually a guy who's been with us all summer, uh, who's from, yeah, who's from that area. Booked an evening, was just traveling with us all summer, like, uh, we're looking.
You just, I'm just saying. Say what? Oh, yeah, only the parts that'll make somebody mad, now. Why would I do that to you?
It'll play again in the board.
Good, good, good. Seven, three?
Seven, seven, or six, seven, eight, and nine, and then it'll change it, nevermind. So I got Kevin and Frank, they got you hurt.
It will?
Man, I just wanna make it obvious to the people. That's your representative? He's my people. I ain't gonna get so much trouble. Good night, hey, I'm gonna have to leave you here tonight, guys.
Go.
Alright. Angie, I'm gonna see you in a minute.